All right. Call the meeting to order. Thank you, folks, for allowing us a little break here. We had Miami University students in. Like I was saying before, they did. It would have been a phenomenal presentation if you'd seen it. I mean, it really was one that had you seen it. I'm sorry. You know, talking about converting some of our vehicles to EV and then the solar panels down at the water plant and payback and ROI's. And they did a phenomenal job. I love it, love it, love it. So, thank you, Mr. Sackenheim, for putting that together. All right. If you would all please stand as Councilmember Gwen Brill reads our prayer and pledge.
Thank you, Lord, for this day. For us to enjoy. We thank you for these young people that were here this evening. All of the work that you put into your presentations. For show for me. And we just ask that your blessing upon them. We ask, Lord, that tonight you go with us as we listen, take in the issues that are before us, and help us in making the best decisions. We also want to thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to serve our residents. And we ask all these things in your name.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilmember Brill. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Paulus. Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
Councilmember Kraft. Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Davidson.
Here.
Councilmember Brill.
Here.
Councilmember Bessel.
Here.
I move to excuse Councilmember Paulus. And Kraft.
And Kraft.
Second.
Second. One favor. Pose. Motion carried. Thank you. Don't have any, anybody have any agenda modifications? Hearing none, we'll let them stand. Stand as proposed here. Is there an executive session request for this evening?
Yes, there is, Mr. Mayor, to consider confidential information related to negotiations with other political subdivisions, respecting requests for economic development assistance, and pending or imminent litigation with attorney. Thank you.
All right. I have a special.
I'd like to make a motion for executive session for the reasons stated by the city manager.
On favor? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Davidson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brill.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessel.
Yes.
Thank you. Now I can do a presentation. You're a good guy. Come on up, Donna. How are you? So, in celebration of Arbor Day, I'm going to read a proclamation from the office of the mayor and presented to Donna here, who's on our environmental commission with the Parks and Rec. Chair of it? They wouldn't let you quit, would they?
Keep going.
Oh, well, we appreciate your service, so. All right. As a proclamation, whereas trees and the urban forest are an important part of the community's infrastructure, valuable assets for our next generation, and trees and the urban forest have been shown to reduce crime, vandalism, and vehicular speed, and are important to our community's safety mission, and trees and the urban forest reduce stormwater runoff, reduce pollution, and are important resources for our community service mission, and trees and the urban forest reducing air conditioning costs, heating costs, saves our residents' money, and reduces our energy needs, making our community more livable, and trees and the urban forest make our neighborhoods more inviting and attractive and are a foundation for our community development efforts, and trees and the urban forest attract shoppers and the businesses and are important components of our community's economic development mission. Now, therefore, I, Metro Otis, Mayor of the City of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 26, 2024, Arbor Day in the City of Fairfield, Ohio. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to protect and nurture our trees and our urban forest, not just for the beauty they provide, for the benefits, but they also, the benefits they give our residents and community. Thank you very much. Thank you much for.
We had our Tree City Luncheon on Friday. We're 29 years of Tree City, but we also got a growth award this year. And I want to give a shout out to our city manager last year. He was our speaker last year. And one of the ladies from Wyoming, who's going to host the Tree City next year, said he did a wonderful job, so we must be proud of our city manager for the job he did. His talk was very good, Scott.
Thank you.
So that's my future race.
Appreciate that.
See you later, so.
I'm helping you, Scott.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All righty. Next part on the citizens' comments, I'm going to recognize two members of our audience, councilmembers from the city of Hamilton, our friends up north, who I meet with on a regular basis with their mayor and some of their council members, Councilmember Michael Ryan and Joel Lovelower. Would you guys like to say something here? Sure, if you've got the mic. As a good politician, you only get about a minute, though, so, no, I'm just teasing.
Well, good evening, Mayor Otis, and members of Fairfield City Council. I'm Hamilton City Councilman, Michael Ryan, and it's an honor to be here this evening. I do want to take a moment and commend all of you for your tremendous work to the City of Fairfield and to serving the residents. We greatly appreciate your service to the city and to the business community and to the resident community, so thank you. I wish I had better news to share with all of you this evening. As you are all aware, the Miami Conservancy District has increased their assessment fees on our business community and our residents. Here are a few examples of the assessment figures that have been delivered thus far. Spooky Nook is currently paying $9,000 per year to the MCD, but will now be paying close to half a million per year. Markham Apartments is paying $860 per year, but will now be paying $60,000 per year. Some of our residents are paying $215 per year, but are now getting billed $1,400 per year. As you can tell, the increases will be devastating to our businesses and residents. Simply put, people could be forced out of their homes, forced out of their apartments, and if this issue is not resolved, our future economic development projects will now be in jeopardy, and this will continue to cause businesses to close. The very entity that was created to protect us is the very one that is going to destroy us. MCD should be incentivizing business development, not penalizing it. MCD has failed to recognize that our residents and businesses are already being crushed by the high prices of food, gas, and in the recent increase in property taxes in Butler County. It's simple, they cannot handle any much more. These fees are unjust, they are unfair. Simply put, this is taxation without representation. My ask to the members of Fairfield City Council this evening, please join us, and please help your friends in Hamilton. We ask that you consider supporting a resolution, supporting a two-year moratorium on the Miami Conservancy District's readjustment of appraisal benefits. Your support will be greatly appreciated among our residents and business community. And I quote, at the beginning of this process started, "You can't change what you don't confront." And thus, by confronting Miami Conservancy District is something that we take very seriously because of the ramifications that will be felt immediately if this process is not stopped and these fees go through. The devastating impacts on Hamilton will be very significant and great. Again, I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak to you this evening, and I greatly appreciate taking time to discuss this issue with all of you tonight. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Ryan, what was the first number you gave on Spooky Nook?
So, Spooky Nook is currently paying $9,000 a year to the MCD, and they were just handed a bill for a half a million dollars. So, they will be paying that every year for the next six years. MCD does reassessments every six years.
You had a meeting with them a day or two ago.
So, we asked to have a meeting with them and a member of their board, who's also a Hamiltonian, and their executive director. They did come down. We do greatly appreciate that they did take time to have a special meeting. Thursday's meeting was passionate and, at moments, was heated. This is the first time that the board has been seen in the Hamilton community after delivering these atrocious bills to our residents and our business community. So, they have been confronted, they did come down to face the music, as you will. Good news is, we ask that they come down again so we can reevaluate this process and try to negotiate.
There's got to be some justification.
We got it, we got to negotiate here. That's the only way that we're going to move forward together. They have a mission to achieve, we have a mission to achieve, but what is being proposed right now is not an achievable mission on either side. So, they are coming down May 3 at 5:00 to have another meeting. It will be a full board meeting. So, I think it's 13 counties that cover the Miami Conservancy, but it's only three people that are calling the shots for a lot of people.
And that brings me to my question I had marked here. Surely, they're getting all kinds of heck raised by multiple communities. I mean, you guys weren't isolated out.
So, because the way Hamilton is located in the river basin, we are at the bottom of the barrel. So, everybody north of us is more or less protecting Hamilton. So, in their eyes, we have to be assessed higher because we're the ones getting most of the protection. However, the way that their current methodology is in the books, it's just an unfair tax among a particular set of people, businesses and residents. So, all the money that Hamilton's going to be giving to the MCD, all the communities north of Hamilton are going to be getting nice new levees, new dams, new river scapes, and what are we stuck with? Everything that we're currently looking at right now.
And paying 40 times more.
Exactly. Some folks are being assessed 500% more, 500% more. So.
Are these based, are these assessments based off of the new property assessments with tax that?
Yes. Soon as, as soon as the 37% went through, MCD came right behind them because they knew that now is the time to get the money.
And they're using those same numbers that's coming from?
Yes, more or less. They have a, they have a benefit analysis, what they call assessment formula, their methodology, as you will.
Well, I mean, if they went up 37%, it may not be all that bad, but they're going up 400 or.
Some cases, higher than that.
I mean, 37% is bad, don't get me wrong, but what they're doing, and what I'm hearing and reading.
They're basing it also at 30, that's the new value they're using, and then they're going up for a higher end for this upfront, right?
Mm-hmm.
Amazing.
So, we have quite a situation up north. And, you know, give credit to city council, we have been more united than I've ever seen our team be, and they got the message last Thursday night, that if this is not fixed, we will continue to push and press until we get what we need to get, because what is taking place will shut down the city. And when these businesses leave, there won't be any money for them to get. So.
Unbelievable. Any other questions?
I just want to make sure, the ask is what, Councilman?
If, if you guys can consider passing a resolution supporting Hamilton's efforts and.
And a timing on that would be?
Two years.
No, I mean, timing for the resolution.
Oh, as soon as you can.
With two weeks, two weeks from now?
That's fine.
At our next meeting?
Yep, that is fine.
Okay.
That is fine.
Okay, cool. We're here to support you. I appreciate, you know, I don't know whether you know, but the mayor there and I, we get together with some council members on a regular basis.
Yes.
With some council members from here, and that relationship is strongest now it's ever been, and we're doing a lot of things jointly with you guys, so we appreciate that so, so much.
Absolutely. We love the task force. It's a great, great way to move both cities together once. We love the relationships.
Cool.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much.
Michael, can I ask you one question?
Yes, sir.
Is there a lead person that I would speak to from, is it Ms. Block, or is there someone else that is?
You can contact city manager, Craig Bukke, and he'll be more than happy to give you all the information that.
Look forward to the opportunity to speak to Craig.
Yeah. Steve, thank you.
Good.
All right.
Well, thank you for your time.
Mayor Otis, members of Fairfield City Council, appreciate you letting me speak today. As Michael made you aware, that this will have a definite negative impact on us. I remain concerned and frustrated.
I'm going to quick, name and address.
Oh, sorry, Joel Lovell, City of Hamilton, 1430 Alexander. I am, I remain concerned and frustrated, and quite frankly, I'm rather disgusted. I'm a teacher in Hamilton City Schools, and I see the impact that it has on my students. I see the struggle, the daily struggle, and I'm worried. And with all due respect, 37% may sound like less than 500%, but to my students who come to school and their parents are struggling to make every payment that they can right now, and their one misfortune with a accident in a car or some mishap at home, water heater goes out, that impacts those kids, that impacts our students. However, I think that we have seen what has happened when Hamilton lost all its industry with Champion Paper, Beckett Paper, Mosler Safe, and the list goes on and on. They talk about safety, MCD talks about safety, yes. We, we need that safety blanket, we need the safety blanket of MCD. However, a healthy Hamilton economically and a growing, Hamilton growing can only benefit Fairfield, can only benefit its economic development, and I fear, because we've seen the devastation that went through in Hamilton, I fear what happens if we lose our emerging hospitality industry. It is emerg, it is a great industry, it is growing. If Spooky Nook decides to pack up their bags and leave, our hospitality industry will be done. There will be no hospitality industry. Our students will suffer, their families will suffer, to supporting many of the families where our kids go. And we are so close in proximity that Hamilton Fairfield kids interact. Things happen. Crime will go up as we lose our industry. We've seen this happen once before in Hamilton, and it cannot happen again because you too will be affected. You too will be affected, and we must prevent this. I only ask that you stand with us and carry out the request of Michael Ryan. I'm very devastated by this news, I'm very passionate about it, and I will continue to stand against MCD as long as, as long as they continue this direction. However, I did feel hope the other night, and I'm hoping that as other municipalities join with us, that they will see fit to change their methodology.
Just out of curiosity, are they telling you what they're going to, they're going to spend this money on the additional levees upstream?
Yes. There are 42,000, there are 47,000 people bearing the weight of this, of this assessment out of 1.6 in all the counties.
Yeah.
That go along the Miami Valley.
That's something.
So.
Wow.
We recognize the need, we do recognize the need. However, at this point, they fail to recognize the needs for the City of Hamilton. So.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll get together and we'll get something in your hands, and I think everybody here is devastated by reading it.
A healthy Hamilton makes a healthy Fairfield.
Oh, yeah. We need to be together on it.
And vice versa.
So, I agree. Thank you. Anybody else have any more questions for this?
Thank you.
All right, guys, thank you. The next part, now contrary to the last time, I know we have some residents here. When we talked about the optimized senior living thing, we actually held it back to the second reading, but typically, a second reading is just that, so there's usually not much debate then, so what I'm going to do is turn it over to, you know, council comment, or citizen comments now. So, if you're here for that event and you'd like to say something as a result from the planning commission recommendation to this board, then now's the time to come up and say what you would like to say. Nobody? Because, because once we get to the second reading, typically is not a debating type of it, it's just a second reading, kind of like a pause to let residents come and say their piece. So, okay. Any other citizen comments from anybody? Okay, yes, ma'am? Totally, you're welcome to, well, wait a minute, we're going to rerun. Oh, I looked down and looked over, I said, we picked up somebody, I didn't know.
Sorry, I went up to use a restroom.
Yep, name and address.
Phil Lucenhop, 6146 East River. This project went on across the street. I've lived here for 14 years, and I don't know if you guys, there's the gravel pit behind it, there's the river behind it. All these additions you're building, building, all of these buildings you're building, closest to our front doors possible, you're a few hundred feet from our front doors. This is, there's a lot of this dark side of the operational that you don't understand. I've been an end-of-life caregiver to my mother, which I just lost today, and there's been countless pull-ups with feces, there's urine, there's stuff. This is going to go in the garbage. This has not been discussed by any of these planning committees, none of this dumpster stuff. So, you're going to have human feces going in the dumpster, you're going to have medical waste back there, you're going to have leftover food from 60-plus residents that are going to eat three times a day. So, all this leftover food is going to go in the dumpster. You are right there by the gravel pit, by the river, there is wildlife there, there are coyotes, there are coy dogs, there are foxes, there are raccoons, there's going to be river rats. So, currently, the process of the building that's over there now for the One Way Farm, he has the buildings there, and I've been over there for 14 years. I knew bar condo, she adopted a dog from us, a puppy from us, so every one of those buildings has large rodent rat traps with big holes in the side. So, if you're in a building, these houses, a few hundred feet from our front doors, these are going to need these rodent traps. I feel I can't keep my garage door open if this is going to be a problem, just besides the visitors, besides all the operational things, all the operational woes for this thing going in, this is, it's too much people for this little area, and there's no protection from that gravel pit. You can't tell me you're going to stop rats from coming up from that river, you're going to tell me you can't stop coyotes, you can't stop coy dogs. And when they come to those dumpsters, and they cannot get in those dumpsters, because yeah, you can build a wall, you can put a paylock on it, but when they can't get there, it's like the Nat Geo. You've got Eskimo village, and you got a dumpster, oh, yeah, the pommelberry can't get the dumpster, he's going to go in the village. You know, I live right, the farm is right there to the south of that, I've been volunteering on that farm for 14 years. There are chickens right on the other side of that, and when you start bringing in dangerous animals in this area, that berm to the south that you think's protection from that farm, that's where they're all going to house. There's a chicken coop right on the other side of that, that berm goes all the way to the road, right up to our front of our houses. This is, this is a biohazard concern with all the feces and all the stuff that's going in the dumpster, this is going to be a wildlife concern when you start bringing in dangerous animals, and this is going to be a concern for our safety. So, I want you to consider this. I think there's need to be some wildlife professionals, I think, I feel like the due diligence has not been done on this. I feel like there's more work needs to be done. You had a road study that talked about traffic, yes, that was two years after COVID, and everybody was still working from home, so that's not even an accurate thing, I don't think anymore. I think something needs to be updated. I think there's a lot of concerns here, and I think you're truly bringing a safety concern to this community here. We are a village of houses, and you are plopping this business right in the middle of these houses. That's going to house, yes, residents, but there's a dark side of this, feces, the blood, the urine, the medical waste, all that you're putting in here, and I know you don't want, I know you don't want a place next door to you that he has rat traps. I know you don't want medical waste next door to you. This isn't a fact of like, oh, we don't want this in our backyard. If you have not noticed, One Way's been in our backyard for 30-plus years, and our community has dealt with them. We've, we've, we've had goods and paths, yes, a lot more goods in the past than we have frequently, but recently, but that's the matter of the thing I have. I just want to protect our community. I think this is really important, I think there's a lot of stuff that's been overlooked, and I think what you see on paper is a gravel pit, which is like, oh, perfect neighborhood, nothing there. No, that's a highway right to that river, that's a highway for dangerous animals, and if you're bringing those in our community, that's going to be an issue. I want you to look at that, I want you to consider that, and please, protect our community. We did a prayer at the beginning, you want to do the, make the best decisions for our community, please, please, make the best decisions for our neighborhood. You really consider this options. Everybody's seen National Geographic, you know, when you put a dumpster, and that's another thing, currently, there's two large dumpsters here at One Way Farm that house 20 kids. They're talking about, everything was dismissed, we talked about the planning commission, somebody's met us afterwards, they're like, oh, there's probably just going to be one dumpster up in this location. Well, if you're tripling the people, the residents there, you've got employees coming in, I guarantee you're going to need more than one dumpster there, you're going to need more than two dumpsters, because there's two dumpsters for 20 people, and they're both overflowing right now, as a matter of fact, and that's not the first time I've seen that over the years. I know you're probably moving out, and I know there's stuff they're getting rid of, but this is a serious concern. How are you going to protect us from rats coming up from that river, right over that edge? If you look at that little side street, you go through that berm, the gravel pits, practically right at the river, you can't stop that wildlife from coming up, you can't put walls. If you put walls, you're going to get around it through our property to get to those dumpsters. You are really, this has just not been looked at. The dumpster thing's been shooed away, a lot of these other things have been shooed away, the wildlife stuff, these are our true concerns. We've lived in this neighborhood, I've lived in this neighborhood for 14 years, and I fear that you are really creating a big problem here. We've already got neighbors talking about moving out of Fairfield, because they know what you're bringing. They, it looks great, it's got a big bill on it, it's money, but there's a lot of problems that you don't understand. I feel like this has been misrepresented as a property for a bunch of residents where they cannot handle it. You are really putting a big problem. Ring of houses, a bunch of food, it's basically a food service, you have a restaurant in the middle of this, river winds are going to take them smells, you're going to draw in the animals. When they decimate the bunnies, what are they going to do? They're still going to smell the dumpsters, they're going to stay in the area, then they're going to go for garbage, they're going to go for our cats. This is an issue. So, if this is not looked in further, I feel like due diligence isn't done, I feel like there's somebody that needs to be held accountable for making the decision that's going to affect the community here. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you. Ma'am, go ahead. Just state your name and address, just for the record, because it is recorded, and obviously you're, we understand it's a totally different topic.
I'm Barbara Shire, 1042 Gale Avenue, and I am representing the National Association of Letter Carriers. Ever since the early 1990s, we've, the second Saturday of May has always been letter carrier food drive day, biggest one-day food drive in the entire nation. Since its inception, we've collected like 1.9 billion, billion pounds of food that all go to the local food pantries. Last year in Butler County, we picked up 15,200 pounds, all of it goes Shared Harvest Food Bank, right here in Fairfield, to be distributed to their food pantries. Just want to make a quick mention about it, it's Saturday, May the 11th, and we ask everybody to leave your donation either in or next to your mailbox and your letter carrier or a volunteer like myself, I'm a retired letter carrier. We will come around and pick it up, take it to Shared Harvest. I know it's Mother's Day weekend, and people got other stuff going on, so if everybody could think about it, write it on your calendar, drop your donation, you know, first thing in the morning, and people like me are going to come around and pick it up, and, you know, with the inflation and everything that's going on, we hope that everybody who's, you know, able to, will make a donation this year.
Before you step down, I'm going to just reiterate the items that you need and that are best to put out by your mailbox.
Non-perishable, you know, canned goods, mac and cheese, that's always a big one. You know, Shared Harvest has actually expanded quite a bit, they've got like fresh food now, they've got frozen, they've got, you know, refrigerated stuff now, they've really expanded, but for this food drive, we usually like just the, the non-perishable stuff is the easiest to handle for right now.
So, May 11th?
Saturday, May 11th.
We can put it on our city's website, and we can get it around, that's a good one.
Okay.
There you go. If you have that electronically, that'd be cool, if you want to email that to me.
I'll just give this to you.
That's better, and I'll scan it and have it in. Oh, and that's good. All righty. Appreciate what you do for our community. All right, anybody else in the audience? Council reports down here?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I attended Saturday, April the 20th, the Joe Nuxall Miracle League 2024 Opening Day Parade, and what a day it was, it was just fabulous. And I have to say, thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to do it, because it truly was a blessing to me, just to see the joy on these kids' faces is, it just does something to you. So, we're just so fortunate to have this in our community, and the work that they're doing down there is just fabulous. So we're just so fortunate to have this in our community, and the work that they're doing down there is just fabulous. So if you've never been down, go check it out down on Grow Lane. They are doing just leaps and bounds, wonderful, wonderful things for the disabled kids and adults in our community, so it was a great event, so well-attended. And I want to say that we issued a proclamation for Walt Lunsford. Saturday, April the twentieth, was Walt Lunsford Day in the city of Fairfield for all of the donations and all of the work and things that he has made to the Joe Nuxall Miracle League. So great day. If you see Joe or Walt, tell him congratulations. Thank you.
That was a great event. I, I did miss it, but obviously, every year, it's really cool. But Walt Lunsford was a high school, Fairfield High School graduate of about nineteen seventy, little before me, seventy-one, maybe, seventy-one. And, and he is a, is responsible for a lot of the development down there and the money donations, so that's well honored. Am I down here?
The Water Division will begin its annual fire hydrant flushing program on Tuesday, April the thirtieth, focusing initially on neighborhoods west of Pleasant Avenue. Flushing will then be performed for the next four weeks, Tuesday through Thursday, between the hours of eight AM and three PM. The Water Division performs hydrant flushing to improve water quality by removing buildup sediment from the public water lines. Residents may experience some discoloration of the water for a short period of time during and after flushing efforts. This, if this occurs, residents should run cold water through several inside faucets until the water becomes clear. The city will utilize social media pages as well as Code Red call system to provide more details and updates to our residents. You want to add anything to that, Anna?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
And from Parks, I am so excited. I just learned about this today from Mandy. We are gonna be doing Fridays by the Lake out at Marsh Lake, and for anyone that hasn't been out there here, I've lived here since I was eight years old and been out there a handful of times before I was on the Parks Board. It is an amazing, beautiful resource that we should all be taking advantage of, but Fridays by the Lake is gonna have acoustic style music or a small band, a food truck, and the beer tent. And the first one is gonna be on June fourteenth, and then we'll do one on July twelfth and again on August ninth. The music is from five to seven, and the food truck will be there, maybe longer, depending on how long people stay. We'll see how it goes, but I think it's a really neat thing, and I hope, I will be out there. I hope to see some of you out there, too.
That is a crown jewel for the city. I would recommend to you residents, you guys live down there, you probably walk it sometimes, I imagine, over to the lake, don't you? So it is a phenomenal, phenomenal, and I love sitting there at sunset behind your back, listening to some music, eating some food. Great for the Parks Department to get that going. Major Laningham, the Code Red system was mentioned earlier. How often or do you know that, to be honest with you, I forgot that we had it, and it's a really phenomenal system. For those of you who don't know, he can literally draw on a map any street in our community and hit a button and hit, make one recording, and it makes a thousand phone calls a minute or something like that. I may be a little off, but it's real close, isn't it? So, you know, it could be used for, for water, but if a, a, any kind of major catastrophe or lost person or anything, I would encourage, somehow, we need to encourage our residents to update their cell phone numbers in that system, because every resident might have their landline tied to it if they haven't been updated. And so maybe if you get some, some information, I can get it out, too, and we can update that. I would bet there's a lot of people that don't even know we have the system, and number two, that data's old if we did. Is that possible? Cool. We've had that for twenty years, maybe, and used it several times, but it's a pretty cool system, so. All right. There's no public hearing tonight. The minutes, do we have a minutes? No conditions or relations to the minutes before us. We'll let them stand as approved. And we'll move right on to old business. Councilmember Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance, amending, amending ordinance number one six six dash eighty-four, the codified ordinance of Fairfield, Ohio. Section eleven forty-one dot O two, the city of Fairfield, Ohio zoning map. By approving the concept and final development plan for the optimized senior living planned unit development on approximately five point six acres of land on three parcels located at sixty-one thirty-one and sixty-one fifty-one River Road. Move to amend per conditions and attach planning commission recommendation.
Second. Motion second for that. All in favor?
Aye. And let that stand as a second reading.
That'll stand as a rec, a second reading for those in the audience. So basically, what we just did is we took the recommendations from the planning commissioners, which there were eighteen? Sixteen, sixteen recommendations. We kind of married them together, and then now we just let this stand for a second reading to the public. So we won't do any action on it tonight. We're not gonna vote on approving or anything, but the next city council meeting will be the final reading and the final vote, so. All right. And to move on into new business.
Would you like to make a motion to read all new business by title only?
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. And Mr. Timmer for Community Relations.
No update, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Yep, Mr. Myers.
Yes, thank you. I have a, a simple motion. This is a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four summer meeting schedule for the city council meetings to meet the second Monday of each month of June, July, and August.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. All I have on that one. All right, Public Safety, Mr. Timmer. I didn't think you'd have a comment on that one, but I thought. What's he gonna say?
We have two ordinances tonight for public safety. Both ordinances are to authorize the city manager to execute grant, grant applications and agreements. The first grant is a FEMA Fire Prevention and Safety Grant. The second is a Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Grant. Both grants are related to fire extinguisher training systems that will allow the Fairfield Fire Prevention Division to conduct fire extinguisher training for businesses and students using virtual reality and electronic projection and would eliminate the need to utilize combustible fuels for training. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Myers for Mr. Polis.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute the FEMA Fire Prevention and Safety Grant application and agreement for virtual reality fire extinguisher training system and projection, screen fire extinguisher training system, and declaring an emergency. This time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings, please.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, motion to adopt.
Motion for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. The second item is an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Grant application and agreement for a virtual reality fire extinguishing training system and declaring an emergency. Like to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings, please.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from council?
Yes, can we get Firehouse Subs for?
Firehouse Subs? Yeah. Chief, any comment?
Don't answer.
Stop down there. They're usually pretty good when they're making them. All right. Comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All righty. Public Utilities, Mr. Timmer.
We have one ordinance tonight for public utilities. The ordinance is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Red Zone Robotics. Red Zone Robotics is a technology company that specializes in infrastructure inspection using multisensor robotic equipment and associated software to inspect and then quantitatively assess sewer conditions. Thank you.
All righty. Councilmember Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Red Zone Robotics for professional and technical services related to multisensor robotic inspection of the city's large diameter sanitary sewers. I'd like to make the motion to suspend the second and third readings.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And I'd like to make the motion for adopt.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you. Finance and Budget, Mr. Timmer.
We have three ordinances tonight for finance and budget. The first ordinance is for supplemental appropriations. These are requests for TIF fund appropriations to make the school districts whole for amounts collected and distributed by Butler County to the city of Fairfield during tax years twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. The second and third ordinances are for contractual and non-contractual appropriations. The contractual appropriations total four hundred and sixty-three thousand seven hundred and two dollars and are for two projects in the Public Works and Public Utilities Departments. The non-contractual appropriations total four hundred and thirty-six thousand seventy-eight dollars and include fourteen projects from Parks and Recreation, Public Utilities, and Public Works. Thank you.
All right. Finance and Budget, Councilmember Brill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I have an ordinance to amend ordinance number one six six dash two three entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the city of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January first, two thousand twenty-four and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. These are supplemental appropriations, and I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Second is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one six six dash two three entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the city of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January first, two thousand twenty-four and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. These are the two projects that are contractual appropriations. Like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And a motion for adoption.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And last is the ordinance to amend ordinance number one six six dash two three entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the city of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January first, two thousand twenty-four and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And these are the non-contractual appropriations for fourteen different projects. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings, please.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council?
Yeah, what is a bed knife grinder? Somebody tell me that.
Mandy, can you take that?
You were ready for that one, right, weren't you? Okay. It's thirty thousand dollars?
You have to realize how many blades they gotta sharpen.
I'm not arguing. It's like thirty grand for a grinder, so, thank you.
Bought that one twenty-five years ago, maybe, or something. It was a long time ago. I remember making the same comment then.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. All right. Madam Clerk, could you read this council meeting schedule?
Monday, May thirteenth, council manager briefing, six PM, regular meeting, seven PM. Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, council manager briefing, six PM, regular meeting, seven PM. Monday, June tenth, council manager briefing, six PM, regular meeting, seven PM.
All right, folks. Move to executive session.